Thank you.
Check in.
I did get a reply from Bill on that email about the judges.
Oh, okay. Must have been people that have already submitted then.
Yeah.
For everybody?
She likes money, so she's gonna attempt.
Is it in Pittsburgh?
No, it's Minnesota, outside the cities.
Oh, the PGA, isn't it? PGA, yeah, yeah. I was gonna say, 'cause I got tickets to the US Open.
I would like to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, July 6, 2015. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Spate?
Here.
Alder O'Connor?
Here.
Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the June 15 meeting.
So move.
Second. Motion second. Corrections, deletions. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes have been approved. We have one gentleman here this evening in the public appearances section, Mr. Joel Gratz, 5213 Shaw Acres Road, would like to speak against changes in the pool hours. If you could come to the podium, please, Joel.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak for just a moment. I'm here to speak about some changes that have taken place in the pool hours in operation for this summer season. I'm here really more on behalf of my girlfriend, who's the primary pool user. She likes using the pool quite a bit. I know, you know, goes there every chance she can during the summer. I mostly go along to sit and enjoy the sun down there, but she's the user. She's less likely to speak up than me and had to work late this evening. As you probably know, over the winter, the Parks and Rec Committee, under the guidance of the rec staff, undertook a user survey and made some changes to the pool hours for this season to try to increase attendance. And a lot of those changes were really great. I looked at the overall, they've greatly expanded the number of hours that the pools open to the general public, either for open swimming, family swimming, which they have now, lap swimming. I think they're at, I calculated they're at 64 and a half hours, which is almost 35 percent increase over last season. But my main concern here is that the hours where lap swimming is available, which is what my girlfriend does and which I know other people do, has been greatly decreased, actually almost 75 percent decrease. And the reason for that is that while they've added a couple times where there's lap-only swimming, a lane has been, there used to always be a lane available during open swim, and that's been eliminated entirely. So that, you know, whereas somebody used to be able to go to the pool almost any time and be able to do lap swimming regardless of their work schedule or anything else, that now the lap swimming is only available kind of a late morning time, not even quite lunch hour, it's 11 to 12:30, you know, and then there is some new time on the weekends, but that's the only time that's now available for lap swimming. So they've cut the total number of hours, you know, for kind of adults to get exercise at the pool from 48 hours to 12 and a half hours each week. And that is, you know, greatly concerning to me for a resource I think is, you know, hopefully there for, you know, all different members of the community and not just, you know, families with kids or, you know, young adults, but, you know, adults wishing to get, you know, exercise too. I've also been looking back at some of the documents that have, you know, on the rec and, or Park and Rec's agenda, on how this decision was made, the survey and everything. And it's unclear to me actually whether, you know, the idea of eliminating that lane was ever actually even approved or not. The document of proposed pool hours that I found that, you know, the minutes indicate was approved, talks about changes in hours, but makes no mention at all of eliminating this lane during the regular hours. Now, there may have been, you know, individual discussions, it sounds like, about whether that should have been done or not, but I can't tell from the minutes that it was ever actually even approved. And I talked just before the meeting to one of my neighbors, who I, our neighbor up on Nichols, who I found out is on the Park and Rec's board, and, you know, he said he'd have to look back at his notes, it was six months ago when this was done, but he actually didn't remember discussion either about the single lap lane and making changes there. So I guess I come here today hoping to make, you know, one of two requests so that a whole, you know, whole summer isn't lost with, you know, what I think is, you know, an unfortunate change at this point, to either, you know, recognizing that maybe this change wasn't even approved and allowing to go back to the one lane during the open swim times, or at least coming up with some compromise that maybe allows, you know, the one lane to be there during the evening. There's kind of an after, or, you know, an afternoon swim time and an evening swim time during the week, at least in, you know, a compromise that allows it during part of the time, you know, so that the total cut in hours is not so dramatic. So I think that's all I have to say. I, you know, happy to, you know, answer any questions, but I hope you'll, you know, consider looking at the situation.
We're not allowed to get into formal discussion, Joel, but just one point I want. I followed up after your email with the Parks Director, and I don't think it's what your girlfriend's looking for, for the solution, but there, you can do lap swimming anytime, it just doesn't have the protection of the lane marker.
And it's, you know, and that's been brought up. It is very difficult at times when the pool's, you know, there are times when that's probably a viable option, but when you have kids splashing around and stuff who aren't really paying attention. And, you know, it seems like it may be one of the complaints about, you know, getting rid of the lane was, well, it was difficult to enforce, but, you know, it, you know, it did serve to allow people to lap swim.
And I do know they are going to review. I think there are some pros and cons to the summer.
I just hope the review happens as I requested sooner rather than later.
In the Parks Committee chat, Alder Spate?
Yeah, I would simply state that it is my recollection, and I saw your email, and I have not yet had a conversation with Missy or Jake, because I was out of town last week, but it is my recollection that we did not discuss elimination of that lane. It had more to do with when the different blocks of time were allocated for the various activities. So I'll follow up and we'll see what we can do.
Can you tell me, and I guess Alder O'Connor, I think you're the co-chair, do you expect that committee to meet next week or not? I came tonight because it was not clear to me whether that committee might not meet during this.
As far as we know.
Okay.
But lots of times we don't know until fairly soon before, and Jake is on vacation this week.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public appearances? Seeing none, we'll close that. There's no public hearing this evening. We have a number of items up on the consent agenda for applications for operators licenses. I would entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Licenses have been approved. Item G, unfinished business is consideration of Resolution 15-6, excuse me, -2034, the appointment of an interim municipal judge. As you recall, this item was tabled at the last meeting.
It wasn't tabled. It was just first read.
Oh, it's just first read? Okay. All right. Is there a motion for approval?
I move approval of the resolution appointing an interim judge for discussion purposes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second. Discussion? Well. Alder Wood?
Yeah, one thing, I know that Michael Finley is here, so I don't know if he wants to speak to this or not, but...
Do you wish to speak, Mr. Finley? If you do, please come up for the thousands of viewers who are watching.
I guess I just wanted to come in case anybody had any questions. I did send a letter out with some further resume information. The council got that. I think there were, one judge sent a letter independently and another one sent me one today that I forwarded on to everybody today. I don't know if they got those today, but if you have any questions or anything.
Any questions to Mr. Finley? Stay tuned.
I guess, I guess the only thing I could say, you know, and I think I probably mentioned it in there is, I know, I don't know all the people who applied. I knew some of them. And I know some of them who have applied really have only lived in Manona for, moved in last year. And I guess I've been a homeowner here in Manona for 23 years. I grew up on the east side of Madison. I think I'm pretty much in tune with what's going on in Manona and people's values and feelings are. And I'm familiar with the city itself, so I think that is something to advocate for my own position, so thank you again.
Thank you. And thank you for your interest in the position. Discussion. Alder Wood?
Yeah, let me just, I guess the, just some comments I would have for that in reviewing the information, resumes that we received from Bill Cole after the last meeting, but I would consider all the applicants qualified for the position except the doctor. I mean, I don't have to be a lawyer to be a municipal judge, but it seems like a really good idea to be a lawyer, and we have qualified candidates. That said, I would also agree with Bill's essentially recommendation or analysis that Mr. Finley and Ms. Ricardi are the two most qualified candidates. I guess I was hoping that she would be here tonight too to... One question I had, I know Mr. Finley's retired and Ms. Ricardi is a Dade County Circuit Court Commissioner, and whether the Muni judge position, the hours would conflict with any of her work obligations. I guess my assumption would be no, but that she would have considered that before applying, but it would have been nice to be able to ask her.
Further questions? I guess I'm, Alder Thomas?
Do we know how long that proposed candidate has lived in the community?
I don't.
And the reason I ask the question is, when I think back of the judges that we have had in the past, I think they have had an understanding of what I would call the community values. The city, they have been involved in the city, they have known about the city, they understand the values. And I think that's an important asset for someone who's going to be judge. And I don't know whether she's been here six months or 60 years. Oh, probably not 60 years, but... So that's just my personal thoughts on the matter.
Further question? What's the will of his body? I don't know what we're doing. So, Alder Bussie, then Alder Holmquist?
I guess, Mayor, when the review was made, what was the thought process to make the recommendation that was made?
I went through the first three. I did reference checks and they all came out fine. And again, I concur. Everyone on there, even the doctor I know is incredible person, but came down to Mr. Finley in Manona, and I picked the woman. Simple as that. If you want to know, we haven't had a woman judge, I'm putting forth a woman judge. You asked. I didn't want to bring up these kind of point, you know, this is not the way I had planned on doing it. So what's Alder Holmquist?
So at the last meeting, I had a question about how long an interim, not, because we have until April when the next election, unless we wanted to hold a special election. And in the interim, there was a possibility of using a judge from a different community. And I was asking how long that can be maintained and is it sustainable to do through that period?
Yeah, it's ongoing. It is an option. It's not the ideal option, but it's something that we can do.
And why did you want to do that? Or why are you considering that?
The reason I had that question is because this position is an elected position, not necessarily an appointed position. We have less than a year into election, and...
I'd rather not.
My opinion is if someone gets appointed into this position, they will be the incumbent, and they're going to be the judge beyond that.
It's an advantage.
So I just appreciate the piece of appointment versus election.
Further questions? Comments? What are we gonna do? Alder O'Connor?
I guess, I think it, given some of the questions that have been raised here, it would be good to hear from the other candidate how long she has lived here. This works with her work schedule, since people have concerns about that.
She was at the last meeting?
Yeah. We didn't realize that though till she...
All right, so what, someone make a motion?
Move to table.
Second.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, the...
All right, let's do a roll call.
Okay, all right. Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Nay.
Alder Wood?
Nay.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Nay.
We have a tie, Mayor Miller. You can vote in a tie or just stop right here.
It's gotta pass. It's gotta pass. So if it doesn't pass, then it's...
The mayor doesn't have a vote on the table.
No, but it has to pass, and it didn't, so it's not tabled.
All right.
So is there a motion?
The reason why I nay existed is I didn't want it to be on a table without us coming up with a process of what's going to happen next. I'm afraid if it gets tabled, that there wouldn't be discussion on what is it, how is it that we're going to handle this issue.
How would you care, wish to have this handled? Alder O'Connor, then Alder Wood?
Could we invite her to the next council meeting and ask her questions?
I'm not going to be here for the next two, so there wasn't much on the agenda, but for this, you'll have a meeting.
But, but if you're going to ask her, then are you going to ask all of the applicants? Or two of the interested applicants, or?
Well, if the mayor, I'm thinking if the mayor came down to these two as his top candidates. Or we could send her an email and ask her.
Call her right now?
Yeah, so...
Holmquist?
Although I know this position is different than all the person, but it seems as if the idea of having open discussion, open interview may be not the best way to do it. And maybe it's a way to invite some folks into a, either a closed session or a smaller group to be able to do that discussion.
Can't do that in a closed session.
Or, I'm thinking to the process similar to when they did an appointment for the school board position recently, the process they went through.
You can do that in open session. You can't have a public forum in closed session regarding a appointed position.
Is the way that they were able to do that for the school was it was a smaller subgroup?
I have no idea what the school board did.
Alder Thomas?
My recollection, and I would ask Alderman Wood, if, when we have replaced council members and people were interested, I thought we had them make a statement to the council and then select it after a statement of why they were qualified, why they were interested, et cetera, and then chose.
That was the practice in the one alder that was appointed during my tenure here, is that anyone was interested, presented to the council, and the council voted on that.
Alder Wood?
I agree partially with what Alder Thomas, how she described the process, but I think the people who had applied and were interested just came to the meeting and spoke. And I guess, so, but it was done, you know, in an open setting, which I personally think is good, and I think it's good that we had this discussion tonight as well, you know, to know what the mayor's thinking about it was, I think is a good, good thing, you know, it's good public policy to have that in the open. I guess, I'm just thinking, we've got, let's see, the Muni court meets two times a month? Or is it three?
Twice.
Once, once in regular court and once in juvenile?
Twice in municipal court, once in juvenile.
So there's three meetings a month, and we're in July, so you've got about eight, no, almost nine months to go. Talking about using an interim judge for, you know, 27 court sessions. So my preference would be that we go ahead and make an appointment. And, you know, I don't know, Ms. Ricardi was here at the last meeting, she didn't speak, and she chose not to appear tonight. We don't know why, and there's some other questions. So, I guess, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'll move to amend the resolution to select Michael Finley as the interim municipal judge.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. Okay. Is there a second?
Second for discussion purposes.
There's a motion, second. Alder Spate?
I just wanted to comment on my recollection of the time that we appointed an alder, which was Paul Amant, a former alder. In my recollection is that one of the reasons that the council decided to essentially appoint Mr. Amant was because he said in his testimony here that he had no interest in running for the position, but that as a former alder, he would do the community service by stepping in. And I think that speaks to the comment that Alder Holmquist made, and I think that some of us are feeling that we are being put in a position to essentially appoint someone to a position that they will likely get reelected to. And while I have no problem with either one of these candidates with the very limited information that I have about them, I don't feel qualified to choose one over the other without more information if I'm going to be asked to make that choice. I guess I am willing to defer to the mayor in your having made a selection, but I do respect those concerns about appointing someone that will easily be likely reelected, and I just wanted to bring up that point about our one precedent, which is essentially contrary to this situation, so.
Further discussion? Questions? Alder Wood?
I guess, well, I agree that certainly being a incumbent is an advantage. Also think the municipal judge position is something that a lot of attorneys are interested in, and I think there's a more than insignificant, or there's a significant chance, I think, that there would be a contested election in the spring, that somebody else might, you know, want to do, hold that position. I think they'd probably be at some disadvantage, but I guess the other point is, I was, you know, persuaded by Mr. Finley's comments and, you know, his connection to the community in particular. And that was, that's essentially why I was persuaded to make the motion I made.
Even though you didn't hear from her?
Pardon me?
Even though you didn't hear from her?
Well, she had the opportunity to submit more information and to be here tonight, and she's, didn't, you know, other than the resume that was submitted, we don't have any other information from her.
Alder, Alder Thomas?
I, I think that, that the fair thing is, and I worry about what Alderman Holmquist says to about an unfair advantage, but I think from our perspective, I think it's appropriate for them both to come, make a statement to us, let the community hear them, if they want to bring letters of reference or something, and then decide. I, I appreciate the letter we got about Mr. Finley today, the letter of reference. I appreciate the fact that he's here and that he spoke. And she was here last week, but she never spoke.
Right, right.
Which, which is unfortunate, that she chose not to. And she's not here tonight, and she had no letters of reference to us. And so, but maybe she didn't think she should, and so I think the fair thing would...
No one was asked to do anything?
Well, no, but, but, you know, sometimes you don't wait to be told. If you want something, you show your interest by...
She's interested. They're all interested. I followed up with them after because I thought it was gonna end, so.
But they showed you that, Mr. Mayor, but they didn't show the council or the public that.
So all I'm gonna ask is if that's the way you're gonna go, can we please be explicit in terms of what you want, so it's fair for those parties concerned, so it's not a what if he said, she said, could have, maybe who's here, who didn't? Set the rules of what you want to hear. Do you want them to submit references? What do you want? Alder Spate?
I do think it is helpful to have additional information, and just to ask, Mr. Mayor, the only information you had was the resume that we have, or?
Then I made three reference calls on the first two.
Okay, okay. So if we're being asked to, I guess I'm of two minds. If the goal here is to say that we endorse your decision, I'm willing to do that. I mean, I'm willing to...
And I'm not asking that necessarily. I just want, because this is getting, I'm uncomfortable with what we're doing so far, but I can be comfortable if we just set up. I don't need to make the pick. You guys can make the pick. I'm fine with that, as I said at the last meeting, but I just think we should determine what it is we want of these candidates, because again, the reason it was done this way was Attorney Cole had concerns about the beauty pageant side of this, about...
We never, that, we don't worry about beauty pageant for Alderman, that...
Okay, I'm just saying, that's why he...
Well, I respect what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, and again, I, I think the, my level of discomfort or unease with this is simply that there is not a precedent or a clear process, and I think in fairness to the people that have shown the interest thus far, I don't think it's inappropriate for us to ask for this one final vetting, if you will, so that we can make an informed choice. Though that said, if we want to say that the process is that it happens with your office and we simply are the, you know, we're confirming your appointment, you know, I'm willing to do that. I just speak for myself here, but I know there are others on the council that don't agree with that, that we should be involved in the process. So if we are going to be involved in the process, we do need to define what we need to see.
Okay. Personally, I'd like to see what your qualifications are, why you want to be judge, and if you have a couple of letters of reference.
Qualifications, why you want to be judge, and a couple of letters of reference. Qualifications, why you want to be judge, and a couple of letters of reference.
And a statement at council.
I'm sorry?
And a statement at council.
An appearance.
Yeah. I, and, and when, when we ask, I'd also like to know how, how long they've been here, their involvement in the community.
Okay. Anything else, Alder O'Connor?
Can I just suggest for the future, I know I was, I kind of came into this at the last meeting and hadn't had a chance to look at my packet until that date, and didn't get to look at Attorney Cole's email with the resumes of everybody who'd applied till after the meeting, because we got that really late, so I guess, I just, I think in the, that we should, in preparation for future things happening like this, we should have some kind of a written policy, it doesn't have to be anything longer involved, but just, you know, rather than it just appearing on the agenda all of a sudden as kind of a done deal, if we want to have more input, I think we should have a little better process in place maybe for next time.
I have one other question, do we, does this apply to everyone who applied, or just the final two that the mayor picked, or in terms of who, who appears before us?
Alder Spate?
I would ask that all the applicants be notified of what we're requesting, and then they all have the opportunity to provide, I mean, that, that seems fair.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any further discussions? We still have a motion on the table. Alder Wood?
Just one thing to add, that the, my understanding of the city ordinances and the state statutes is that the, the appointment is actually the city council's appointment, not the mayor's appointment, the mayor can nominate somebody, but-
That's correct.
It's our appointment to make, so. With that said, I withdraw my motion.
This is second, withdraw, okay. Is there a new motion? Do you want to make a motion for?
No.
The motion to do.
I think we wanted to make a motion to-
Set the-
To requ- yeah, to set the process.
Can we do that?
That'd be the same thing, you would be tabling it with the process that you recommended, staff would follow up on that.
Okay, well then-
I just have a question, once we hear from everybody, say all six people come and speak and apply, then what are we?
Not hear the next two meetings.
Right, so, I guess we need to think about what happens after that.
Alder Thomas, council president, will be-
I, I have a question about, can we discuss the candidates in closed session, or does that have to be an open session? Because we may get into person, do we need to check with Bill, we need to find that out.
I wouldn't see a need to, but I can check with Bill.
Well, can, can we discuss, I mean?
Unless you're look, unless you're looking at a, well, I'll, I'll talk to Bill about it.
Okay.
Alder Wood?
I don't think we can, but even if we could, I wouldn't want to do that, I want, it's become obvious, I want the process to be open, and so, I don't know why we would need to go into closed session, but that's not before us right now. So I'll make a, a motion to amend the resolution to request that all of these six applicants submit, be, be informed of the opportunity to submit further information.
Can I just interrupt you for one quick second, because I think there was another applicant after, since the last meeting?
I've sent Bill Cole an email today, and he said, no, there hadn't been any more applicants.
Yeah, I-
If there are, then the-
If they are, then it's, it's, I believe there is one that he's not aware of, and I'll check on that.
Yeah, I think there is one more. So all, all interested applicants up till now, okay. Excuse me.
That they be informed of the process and given the opportunity to submit further information, supporting letters, and appear before the council, and there was something else that Alder Thomas had mentioned.
Length of residency.
Length of how long they've lived here, community involvement.
Involvement in the community.
That was the fourth thing said.
And I, I thought it was a letter expressing their, their reasons for seeking the office, is what I heard her say.
She didn't say letter, she just said the question.
Okay, okay.
Well, they could do a letter or appear, but.
Yeah, it just didn't say letter, so if you want a letter, we should ask for a letter.
So does the clerk have that?
Yes, I do, yes.
You want to give a swag, swing at it?
Sure. Alder Wood's motion was to amend the resolution to inform all interested applicants to the, to submit further information on qualifications, why they want to be a judge, the judge, their references, and how long they've been in the community, and their involvement in the community.
And appear at the next meeting.
And appear at the next meeting.
That's good with your motion?
Yeah, the, like, the only tweak I would make to that is that they be informed of the opportunity to submit the information and so forth.
Formed of the opportunity, okay.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Alder Wood?
Since you're not going to be here for the next two meetings, Mayor, are you comfortable with, with us going forward with it?
Yep. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
There's a motion, is there, is there a motion, second? Mark?
Just a quick thing, the reason why it's starred is, that's for Jeff Palongi's to start negotiating with the bondholders, we need the authorization to do that, but basically the 1.5 is a taxable note, is a developer's agreement with TRISTA, as you're aware of, TRISTA has almost had completion, they're filling their paperwork out, being clients with our developer's agreements, steps, so this is to start, this is the, for Jeff Palongi to go out there, negotiate with the bondholders, and come back at the next meeting with the actual rates for this 1.5 million. This, just so you're aware of, with the developer's agreement, there is requirements they have to hit, so if they let through his requirements, we build on the difference between that, so this will be, be paid in full, like any other development agreements we have.
This was approved earlier this evening, personnel and finance, I might add. Discussion? Alder Spate?
I guess, I just want some clarification on, I, I mean, I'm noting in the packet that this was not part of our original agreement, and so-
No, it wasn't an agreement, I put it in, it wasn't in the actual budget, it's not in the actual budget, it's in the, it's in the developer's agreements, in the project TIF, project plan, just when I did the 2015 TIF budget. The proceeds was excluded in the developer's payment, it was excluding until we knew when we were going to do the actual borrowing, and then we put it into the budget.
And is that standard protocol that it would not have been included?
Yeah, we done it for the other ones, too.
Okay.
Any, for, Alder Wood?
Maybe, just to maybe help clarify this, so what, we're obligated under the developer's agreement to make this payment to TRISTA, once it's completed, which is coming up very soon. At that point, then they are obligated to make payments to the city under the developer's agreement that will cover the debt service cost that we are, would have to pay on this over, they'll pay that over a period of time.
And this is essentially the primary benefit of the TIF.
It's the TIF payment.
Right, right, yeah.
Exactly, yep.
Further questions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Item passes, moving on to 2B, also starred, consideration of resolution 15-7-2031, the approval of a proposal from Enterprise Systems Group for a citywide IP-based phone system brought forth by Director of Administrative Services. Is motion suspend the rules?
No moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second. Motion and second, all those, oh, Will?
Uh, thank you. Basically, what this amendment is to the lease is recognizing our equipment on the US Cellular Tower that is currently located on the hose drying tower, so I think it's Exhibit B, you'll see our antennas that they have placed on there, the Shively antennas, if it's attached, they're just noting our equipment on their towers and saying, here is a different lease based on what you have done. It's called co-locating, is what they call, we're co-locating our equipment on their tower.
And, and there is no financial consideration for this?
Go ahead.
Questions? Any update that you can provide the council in terms of when that antenna will go up?
We are hoping that it will go up before the tower gets painted, so hopefully by the 24th of July is what we're hoping for, we're waiting for the big mast pole to come in, which should be July 13th, and then we'll schedule the date with the vendor who's constructing our tower, and-
All the bracketing is done?
And the bracketing is ready to go, everything's been ordered, so things should arrive about the same time.
Okay. Alder O'Connor?
If we'll just wanted to give a little explanation of the approvals you had to go through to be able to mount this on the US Cellular Tower.
Right.
Because that's part of the reason why we're a little later in the plan than we hope to be at this time.
Right, it's, it's that co-locating that I was talking about, since we are co-locating with US Cellular, even though in the lease, we stated that we can put whatever we want on their tower, it's still their tower, and with FCC and FAA, there are certain rules you have to follow when towers change height, regardless of how high or small it goes, and so we had to follow those steps with the FCC and the FAA, and more importantly, they wanted to make sure they followed those steps because it's their tower, so ultimately, they would have been the one that would have been in trouble if there would have been any wrong, you know, wrong reporting of height wise or anything. Another problem was that we increased the height of the tower by more than 20% of the existing tower, which made us then go through a NEPA study with the Environmental Protection Agency, which basically, they didn't do any studying, it just has to kind of stay there for a 90-day public hearing, which basically means it just sits on somebody's desk for 90 days, and then they pass it for the most part. So that was really the biggest holdup.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Now we move on to Item D, consideration of resolution 15-7-2036, authorizing the dismissal of a water rate case to the Public Service Commission brought forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion suspend the rules?
No moved.
of $75,000 for the total project. The reason for that is that because this is an IP-based system, we're probably going to have to, well, we will have to add more data lines to certain city facilities where we don't currently have data lines, the garages, public works garage, fire department garage, police department garage, and we do have to consider what we're going to do in this building, because the current, this building is currently on the South Central Library system server, so we may have to add separate data lines, or figure out a different configuration for the phone system in this building, so.
Questions?
Alder Spade?
How do those data lines interact with the muffin system that I thought we had connected most of our city infrastructure to?
So I believe that the muffin system does connect this building to City Hall, but only the library director's office is actually connected to the city server, so all the other computers in this building are connected to the South Central Library systems data network.
So this is a system that requires central server integration?
Correct.
It's not simply having, I mean, I think of an IP phone as if you have an internet connection, you have the potential to have a phone.
We're going to have a private network, so it'll be connected over our private network.
I see.
And so that's where this building will need to be completely connected to our private network. And I think that there are different ways that they can go about doing it, but they're not necessarily going to know until they actually get in here and look to see how everything is configured, what the best way and most economical way to provide that, that connection is.
Was this bid and the other bids done with a knowledge of that existing infrastructure and the potential for the, for those?
Yes.
Okay.
Further, Alder Holmquist?
Are there any concerns with some of our, for example, the shelters that have phone lines for the fire detection, or are they going to stay on a traditional landline?
Yeah, they'll stay on traditional landlines, there isn't any reason for them to be connected to our network.
That's just for alarm system.
Any other questions? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item D is starred for immediate action, consideration of Resolution 15-7-2036, authorizing to submit a water rate case to the Public Service Commission brought forth by the-
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Will.
Sorry.
Marking off ahead, starred for immediate action, consideration of Resolution 15-7-2038, approving an amended lease agreement with US Cellular for Monona's low-power FM community radio station antenna construction brought forth by the media coordinator. Is there a motion, suspend the rules?
No moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in second, all those, oh, Will.
Thank you. Basically what this amendment is to the lease is recognizing our equipment on the US Cellular tower that is currently located on the hose drying tower. So I think it's Exhibit B, you'll see our antennas that they have placed on there, the Shively antennas, if it's attached, they're just noting our equipment on their towers and saying, here is a different lease based on what you have done. It's called co-locating, is what they call, we're co-locating our equipment on their tower.
And, and there is no financial consideration?
Go ahead.
Any update that you can provide the council in terms of when that antenna will go up?
We are hoping that it will go up before the tower gets painted, so hopefully by the 24th of July is what we're hoping for. We're waiting for the big mast pole to come in, which should be July 13th, and then we'll schedule the date with the vendor who's constructing our tower and-
All the bracketing is done?
And the bracketing is ready to go, everything's been ordered, so things should arrive about the same time.
Okay. Alder O'Connor?
If we'll just wanted to give a little explanation of the approvals you had to go through to be able to mount this on the US Cellular tower.
Right.
Because that's part of the reason why we're a little later in the plan than we hoped to be at this time.
Right. It's that co-locating that I was talking about, since we are co-locating with US Cellular, even though in the lease, we stated that we can put whatever we want on their tower, it's still their tower, and with FCC and FAA, there are certain rules you have to follow when towers change height, regardless of how high or small it goes, and so we had to follow those steps with the FCC and the FAA, and more importantly, they wanted to make sure they followed those steps because it's their tower, so ultimately, they would have been the one that would have been in trouble if there would have been any wrong, you know, wrong reporting of height-wise or anything. Another problem was that we increased the height of the tower by more than 20% of the existing tower, which made us then go through a NEPA study with the Environmental Protection Agency, which basically, they didn't do any studying, it just has to kind of stay there for a 90-day public hearing, which basically means it just sits on somebody's desk for 90 days and then they pass it for the most part. So that was really the biggest holdup.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Now we move on to Item D, consideration of Resolution 15-7-2036, authorizing to submit a water rate case to the Public Service Commission brought forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion, suspend the rules?
No moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is there a motion for approval?
No moved.
Second.
Motion in second, Mark?
Yes, I just wanted to say, what this is, what this is, I passed, I just started, I passed out what the current rates are for the water, water is, what this is, authorization, authorization to start working with the PSC, perform a rate case analysis. What a rate case analysis, I'll be doing at in-house, is it's basically, you know, a 40 to 50-page report, takes all our documentation, takes all our usage, our users, our consumptions, all their infrastructures, amount of mains we have, amount of meters we have, and all the information. I fill that out, and I give that to the PSC, and they'll take their rate analysis, people will take a look at that. This is going to happen over, you know, three to six months, and they'll take a look at that, and they'll recommend a rate for us, and then after that process, they'll recommend a rate to us, and they'll come back to the Public Works Committee and come back to the council to take a look at that. So this is just the authorization to start the process to look into it. Why we need a rate increase, just a couple of reasons. Last water rate increase was 2011. Since that, we borrowed about 4.5, a lot of that is related to Broadway and Monona Drive projects that we've been doing. We're also anticipating borrowing at least $500,000 in 2016. You guys don't have the capital yet, but we're looking at Bridge Road, there's an area there we're looking at, it's kind of a complex area and some other areas, so looking around $500,000 at least in that area. So between that, between 4.5 and the $500,000, it's about $5 million if we spent since the water rate case, so we need to get that into the rate with that. We also, one of the reasons we lost our largest water user, that's roughly about $60,000, $55,000 to $60,000 worth of revenue that's lost when they left with that, and that's just the water side, it also affected the sewer side. With that, though, there wasn't a lot of, for the sewer side, there is, sewer side we do, since we work with MSSD, we get billed on our volume, so there is a little bit of a decrease savings in there with them leaving, but for the water side, basically we have our water utilities, we run all that stuff, we still have the same expenses, basically we do, you know, we decrease some of the pumping charges and some other minor stuff, but not enough to make up for that difference. And the other one, every time we borrow money, especially with revenue bonds for water utilities, revenue bonds are not part of our debt limit, so they don't, are not in there, so we do revenue bonds, which is very common for utilities to use revenue bonds. There is, there are some certain requirements you have to meet, the major one we have to meet is the debt coverage. Here's kind of a description of the debt coverage, it's basically your revenues and less operating expenses excluding depreciation must be, must exceed 1.25 times the highest debt service for that year. So we have to meet that requirement with the losing of the revenue, and just with the borrowing we've had, just paying that extra debt, shrinkings, we need to kind of cover that gap. I don't know if you can see this very well, 2014, kind of just announced 14 and 15, kind of shows what our operating revenues were, 2014, net earnings after expenses of $937,000, so what our debt service is, our coverage 2014, we're at 1.66, which is a good number. 2015, you'll notice, I don't know if you can see it, last year, operating revenues were 1.5, 100, $1,575,000. This year, projecting just based on the six months we have so far, we're going to come in about $65,000 less, 1.51, and a lot of it's because of, one, because we lost the largest user, and just in general, have it increased a little bit in 2016, we're always very conservation savvy, so they are saving money, so we do see that, you know, decrease in consumptions, and that does affect the revenue, it's kind of one of those, one goes down and you still got to cover your expenses type situations. So 2015 will be, coverage is okay at 1.56, but starting after 2015, 2016 odd, like 2016 we'll be at 1.26, we're right at that level, so we need to increase those rates to meet those demands. The other change, and kind of conservation rates, we could have in there is a major change, we talked about this at finance, when we do the water rate case, we're going to ask the PSC to look at two things, one, keep it standard, as you look at your sheets right now, if you look at the borrowing charges, you see there's a charge difference for residentials and non-residentials. Residentials currently have, they call it a conservation rate, so the more water you use, you know, you get a higher charge after certain units. For commercial, manufacturing, in public authority, the more water you use, it declines scale, so the more water you use, the less the charges per unit. So there in the finance, we talked about, they could look at both of them, because you want to see what that difference is and the effect on the businesses, non-business and residential, and also one of the things we looked at, what are the communities are doing it, so that's some of the things we'll look at, come back, we'll have both type of options when you come back from the PSC, but this, again, is just the start of this, we need to get out there and increase those rates so we can meet our infrastructure demand. Part of the problem we do have in Monona, we're an older community, we have to, the infrastructure means older, just like Madison's doing right now, we have to replace that old stuff, and that's what they're doing too, and that's what we have to do, and part of that is the rate increases comes along with it, so.
Thanks, Mark. Questions of Mark? Alder Wood and Alder Spade?
More just of a comment, expanding on the conservation rates, that the PSC will do an analysis of the breakpoints for, you know, if we went to conservation rates for all the water, wouldn't necessarily stay the same. Right now, if you're 7,000 cubic feet, you're paying 2.55, and then it declines after that, and I think there would only be, how many, two?
There's very few users over that.
That would be impacted, but they would do the analysis, and it wouldn't necessarily be the same breakpoints.
Right, it'd be a whole different structure.
They'll also recommend the rate increase after they do the analysis.
So I would send them all the information, all their consumption for those type of clients and users, and they would take that information and break it down.
Alder Spade?
My question relates, and you may have said this, but I didn't understand if you did, how common is it to have non-residential rates that decline when usage goes up? And, and I, what I thought I heard you say was that we might look to do something similar on the commercial side as we're doing on the residential side, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Where the higher, the more you use, the, the higher the rate?
Yeah, the theory is the more you use, the more you can conserve, because you want to hit those rates.
Okay.
You know, this is one of those things, just in the water, the water utility world is, people, more and more communities are going to the conservation rates, some communities are doing all of them, some are doing what we have, some currently have the same system where the businesses are declining, so it's, everybody's really different right now, but like, I know Madison has their conservation rates, I know some other bigger communities have some, so to answer that question, I mean, it varies from community to community, some are more progressive and some aren't, so it's, but I, one of the analysis they asked for from finance was a breakdown on who does and who doesn't type situations.
Okay. Alder Bussie?
Is there any opportunity to restructure our debt to help with the debt coverage ratio?
Um.
Or is that something we could look into at least, to see if there's?
Something we can look into.
I mean, if rates are favorable now, and we've got some higher interest rates there, we may be able to-
I can talk to Jeff and see how that would-
Rather than just raise rates, lower some of our costs?
Right, and look into, see how that would work. Thanks.
Alder O'Connor then Alder Spade?
I'm just curious, how long does this whole process take between you doing the study and the PSC analyzing it?
With the conservation rates, if they end up doing that, because they're going to, I'll ask them to do both analysis, it's probably going to take a little bit longer, it does take three to six months, all depends who's in line, you know, they have so many analysis, rate analysis people, and we just had a conference that was just at with the PSC, and they were just talking about this, and they probably had like 50 utilities already ahead of it, already asked for, started these rate cases already, so you know, it all falls in line when they get, so probably it's a three to six months, so hopefully by budget time, we'll have some actual numbers.
Alder Spade?
I had a question about the service charges for the sewer service, is it correct to read this chart that where there is a blank space that the, the fee above it would apply to that? In other words, I imagine someone with a 10 or a 12-inch meter is paying $314, just like someone with a 4-inch meter? I mean, they're not paying zero for-
No, they're not paying zero, that's my shot, they, there is a, there is a charge for those. I don't know if we have 6 through 12 for sewer utilities, and that's why we don't have those.
Oh, okay, well, that could explain it.
I believe we don't have that.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that would explain it.
Additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution passes. Item 2D is consideration, excuse me, of Resolution 15-7-2037, urging the governor and state legislature to adequately fund Wisconsin's transportation system brought forth by the city administrator.
Yeah, this was a request by the Wisconsin League of Municipalities that all local governments consider this resolution before you. Obviously, with a vote on the budget occurring this week, I would request that this body, if they are going to consider this resolution, would consider it in one read. It's likely, I spoke with Rep. Call late last week, I believe on Friday, Thursday or Friday, and he stated he thought the vote would occur on Wednesday, so if it's your wish to proceed with this resolution, I would request that it be done in one read.
Move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Second.
Is motion second, suspend the rules, take the item out of order, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in second, discussion? Alder Wood?
Just, one thing I would note that's really important to us specifically, is that joint finance did pass an amendment to increase the funding for general transportation aids to fully fund the fourth, four percent increase, which is the same increase as was provided in the last biennial budget. Likewise, the same for mass transit operating assistance. However, there's a number of other transportation items where monies were decreased with the bonding, the bonding for highway projects and decreasing funding for state heavy rehabilitation program by $50 million annually, which obviously, while we may not have as direct an interest in those items, I think they're still important to us to, that the overall transportation system be improved and maintained.
Additional questions? Alder Bussie?
This might be, this resolution might be exactly what's needed, but I've, I've got some concerns about it because I don't feel that we've got enough information to request what this is saying. I mean, Alder Wood, you just made a comment, but how do I know that's true? I mean, you're an honest guy, but I haven't done homework on it.
You mean the numbers?
Well, I, I saw, there was an email that Pat had sent, but I think there's a lot of, you know, some of the comments that are made in here in the whereas section, you know, we don't necessarily have the detail to make that this is the appropriate solution, which is basically saying, you know, raise user fees in, in response to bonding, and I, I don't know that I can come to that conclusion without, and, and I don't mean for staff to, and this might be the appropriate thing to do, and I don't mean to create more work for staff either, but, you know, how can I conclude that the most appropriate thing to do is to tell the state to raise user fees? I, I, sometimes these resolutions, I just don't feel comfortable with.
City Administrator Marsh?
Yeah, this, I, some good points there, Alder Bussie, I think the, the reason I brought it forth was, you know, we belong to the League of Municipalities because they have a level of expertise, both in the lobbying world and in the local government and state government world that we don't here at the staff level, and so I was going along with their recommendation to proceed with this, and I'm not sure the number of other municipalities that'll go along with this, given the, the timing, the midnight hour here we're at, but I just thought I'd bring it forth based on their level of expertise.
Thank you. Alder Spade?
Well, I, and I, I respect those comments, Alder Bussie, and I would just say, I want to thank you, Administrator Marsh, for bringing this forward, because I think, and I'll, in, out of full disclosure, my, my brother who used to reside in the state has done a lot of work on transportation policy, and I can say with some certainty that what's been going on to our school system has been going on to our roads as well, where we essentially have a situation where funding has been frozen for years, and expenses continue to go up. And what happens is municipalities are the ones that have to pick up the tab for the extra cost, and the state portion of commitment to help us with these things has continued to go down, and so the only way that that's going to change is if the state raises the revenue to provide its greater share of that expense, rather than putting the burden on us. So I, for that reason, I would wholeheartedly support this resolution.
Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say, oh, no, did we make a motion to suspend the rules? We did. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Perry. Reports of committees, commissions, and boards. Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spade?
No report.
Alder Wood?
Just another state budget-related item that will impact the license, liquor licenses, they, trying to remember now, I don't have it in front of me, they, one thing, they removed the allowance where you could count, where a restaurant with seating for 300 or more people wouldn't count against your license quota, and we do have Buffalo Wild Wings here, it's not entirely clear if this, if that, you know, if they would be grandfathered in or not. What was the other thing? They also put in a provision that if you were at your quota, you could buy a license from a neighboring community for $10,000, which, you know, might be something that we would want, you know, depending on the circumstances, might want to do for a redevelopment project potentially. Is that, is that it, John? The reserve thing didn't affect us?
Yeah, the reserve thing didn't affect us. Madison would be our only option for a purchase. You have to be a-
Oh, because they're the only adjacent communities, right? Blooming Grove? If you take the fire truck with the license.
Alder Holmquist?
No report.
Alder Thomas?
No report.
Alder Bussie?
No report.
No report, Mayor.
Just a few things, one is August 4th is the National Night Out, that'll be at Winnicla Park this year, at the Dream Park Shelter. I believe they're going to be landing the MedFlight helicopter at that event, so that'll be pretty cool. July 13th and 20th are the next, Mondays, I believe, and those are the next concerts in the park. As Will may have noted, I, I'm not sure if he did or not, August 21st is the tentative on-air date for the radio, that's the first football game, and that's sort of the schedule as to when it'll first be publicly on-air. I believe that the on-air will occur before that to work out some bugs. And the wayfinding signs will be installed the first week of August, they're just being constructed right now and printed, so they'll be installed the first week of August. They're just being constructed right now and printed, so they'll be installed the first week of August.
Just wanted to send a shout-out to the festival committee. Would assume that records may have been set with the wonderful weather and, and having the holiday lineup on the weekend, everything, the fireworks were spectacular as always, and, you know, problems, safety problems with it, so tip of the hat to there. Also, going back to WVMO, attended another one of the volunteer meetings, every, this place was full, so the enthusiasm with that never ceases to amaze me, so it's very exciting. Will's doing a great job herding cats with all his volunteers, and all the volunteers herding volunteers, and Alder O'Connor's to be commended on that, too. As I mentioned, I'm going on vacation from the sixteenth through the eighth, so Council President Thomas will be in charge in my absence, and that is all I have. Accept the appointment. We have an appointment to the Historic.
Landmarks.
Landmarks Commission. Alder O'Connor would like to serve on that. After that appointment, there remains one more opening, so if you know somebody suitable, please have them apply. Is there a motion to approve Alder O'Connor?
So moved. So moved.
By acclamation.
By acclamation, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.